All right, at six o'clock, I will all the Tuesday, August third, twenty twenty-three Wabashia city council meeting order. For third, like. Okay, we'll go to number three is public comments. This is for the public, obviously. Any comments that you have towards the city council come up. Just ask if you can keep it through two to three minutes, comments. Excited to have you in as well.
I'm just gonna read this letter that Dale and I wrote to Emily Duran and says, approximately twenty months ago, I purchased the Westside Apartments at ten thirty-sixth Seven Street West, Wabashia, Minnesota. When I bought the building, the police were here on a regular basis. CPS had many open cases and we had a lot of problems with drugs, unreligious and violence. We wanted to be a part of the community, so we met neighbors. Many of them were frightened of the tenants. They lost sleep due to loud yard parties and they were told that these, because of these problems, their homes wouldn't sell very easily. Since that time, we've been working on the apartment building continuously. In fact, we invested over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in renovations. We have done some of the work ourselves and spent last summer or this summer onsite in our camper. We have created a safe, drug-free, family-friendly environment. Our neighbors stopped by to thank us for our diligence and watch the progress. It's finally a quiet, peaceful neighborhood, which brings me to the point. The train whistle. It wakes everyone up several times a night and makes business calls virtually impossible during the day. I understand that it widely believed that the train must blow their whistle when entering Wabashia. Okay. Is the brochure from the Federal Railroad Administration regarding current railroad whistling blowing criteria. It also outlines the process to see whistle blowing. When you review the process, you can see that we, that because of the safety measures are in place, we meet those criteria. That's what I'm here to talk about. So Dale spoke to Minister Ann and she said that I will show up here and start the volley towards any kind of discussion of seeing what we can do. So that's all I'm doing is bringing up a topic.
Appreciate it.
Okay, now do I speak?
And wanna, right?
Wanna.
Yeah, I was aware of Emily's conversation, but she dropped off this five-zone established process and it's like ten steps and I just will go to Caroline to at least start the conversation that they have. We could probably bring it back here.
Yes, I'm just trying to not think on your time and break up.
Thanks, thank you. Any other public comments outside of the two public hearings we have today? Okay, I will move on. Any changes or additions to the agenda from anybody?
Move your provision.
Seven. All right, all those in favor say aye. All both same time. Good, passes. Per mayor presentation, Emily didn't really have anything for me. The only thing I would like to bring up is just the send out a many thanks to the River Valley Committee, Wabashia Public Works, and really all the volunteers that were on the festival for last Friday, Friday, Saturday. I think it was an exceptional turnout as far as I could see, especially with all the road construction we have and stuff. So I just would offer my thanks and look forward to next year. Committee reports. I'll just start replying if you didn't need, but I do know we have a meeting next Tuesday. You feel this? Well, we meet next Monday. John, for work?
Portmet, July eighteenth, thirteen, thirteen, every month. A couple items on the agenda. We talked a lot and got an update with respect to the housing summit that's coming up, but a little background on that. A subcommittee was formed in the Port Authority and it's called the Watch Group, the Wabashia Area Team for Community Housing. And this group with the assistance of our senior representative have been working for about eighteen months with the Minnesota Housing Institute and they've been attending different seminars and sessions this full time these last eighteen months. One of those things that we saw from that is a housing study that we all heard recently. And so the culmination of this is a summit that's gonna be, what, September thirteenth up at Coffee Mill and the invited people for this will be local and regional builders and developers, other stakeholders. And I just wanna, I don't know, Jeff, you're on it. I don't know if there's anything else you want to say about that or not, but it's just, it's really something else that what got done with that and in turn the interest that we've gotten because of it, so.
Yeah.
It made some really good interest from Habitat for Humanity wants to do a house and then we've had another developer very interested in an apartment complex.
So that's pretty good. I just, it's just something that the Port Authority, you can have a development agency, hasn't spent a lot of time on. And in just a matter of eighteen months, we really kind of seen there's a need and there's a willingness to kind of make this happen and we know that help is an important part for the city. We got an update with respect to the revolving loan program that the Port Authority has. We have a number of loans out to different businesses for either improvement, startup, maybe some gap lending, that kind of thing, and that program is available. The information is available online for that. All of our loans that we currently have out are all current and performing as we would expect. Blended boost grant application for the food shelf with respect to networking versus corporate partners. We approved that and then I think you're gonna talk a little bit probably about this, but we decided certainly for the two seventeen D agreement that was on July twenty-fourth. That's a whole how to manage the dredge material. This comes off the river every year. And what this did is essentially ensures that there's a partnership between the Army Corps and the City of Wabashia Port Authority in managing that in a way that isn't as so negatively impactful as we thought it might be, certainly back in two thousand seventeen for most of the years. I know you're talking a little bit, but a big thanks to all those people that are involved, past and present city staff, our our city engineer attorneys and citizens that really kind of really got together in two thousand seventeen, eighteen was pretty impressive. I think that really was the thing that kind of sparked this whole thing, so. There's a long time coming. We have a lot of work to do now. We've got a science, so that was about it.
All right, thanks, John. Tony, streets and parks?
Evening, everyone. At the last special council meeting, I updated on the parks since that was off date, but so in the street convention, since then, we discussed the Eagle Basin subdivision, pavement repair, and so the consent agenda tonight, we basically what we did is we got some some kind of curves for old water sewers, we raised them up to get water in the right places and now we gotta bring the street up certain spots, so. We got a contractor that's kind of lined up to do that. That's approved tonight. Gave them project update on street project and that was it.
Perfect, thanks, John. Brian, any for mammals or?
Really great thing that I heard is we have been on a record news for our call volume for the month of July, we had two calls, which is the most called we've ever had in a month, which ended up June, which was more called than five. So our call volume is going up quite a bit with three seven seven. Since we got approved by the state for our cooking ALS, we've been able to take one ALS transfer and build three other ALS calls, so we'll try to see if we can, I guess, ability to break down what we build and what we collect, so we can tell what is being built and collected for ALS, what's being built and collected for ALS. We can have a better understanding of how that program is kind of working. Nine seven two, other things on the agenda, we reviewed candidates last night with one that was suitable. So that'll be coming forward in the future. Nine seven two is back in service, air ride from Phoenix, the Wicked Spring system, which is very different compared to each other. There's a noticeable difference from air ride to Wicked, so. Then we prefer approving that and getting that.
Could you just explain for the audience the ALS term and what that will be for Wabashia?
So ALS is advanced life support, so basically that's where we have a paramedic on duty, we're really able to give more like certain medications, able to do more advanced interventions like pacing and cardio rhythm, activation. So that'll be something that will be beneficial to the three, you're an eye, you're a paramedic, and you have I guess I'm ready for a part-time position last night and then hopefully we still have one more part-time position open after that, so hopefully it needs some more paramedics that can extend that service to cover more time frame.
Perfect. Thanks, Ryan. I don't think we can see her in. Joe, do you have any release on, okay?
Thanks, everybody, for the updates. I will just turn it over to Caroline for the business period report.
Hey, Pat, do you mind coming to the podium, please? So Pat is celebrating his fifteen years of service with the city of Wabashia. So I'm giving him a personalized flower bottle today. And my fun fact is he's probably the only employee that was laid off for three years and hired by People Service. We brought in three years ago and then hired back and I am so grateful he's back. We talked about what we all really enjoy working with Pat. He enjoys sharing his knowledge. People do anything for a resident to help them buy their lease. He'll go above and beyond. He's passionate about what he does and he's absolutely irreplaceable and we just love working with you, Pat, and we're excited that you are here with us for fifteen years and we came back even when you were laid off. And you want more information about that, but we're really grateful you're here and oh, we came up with the slogan, number one in the number two business, so. And then Brian, if you put in mind saying a few words as well on behalf of utilities.
Sure. Yeah, I just, she done most everything, but I just wanna echo on the part of our sewer system and what what transpired there. So we were in a position where we were not, I was weirdly being compliant, being compliant, so we were very near compliance. That's why we had to bring People Service in. And for for Pat to work with them and then come back and kind of take over that whole sewer transition was huge for the city. We went over how much money we saved when we transitioned from People Service back to our in-house sanitary person. And it was very substantial, the money that we were able to save. And without Pat coming back and doing that, we wouldn't have been able to make that transition then or who knows when. So I just wanted to say thank you for your hard work and learning what you did to be able to do that for us.
Thank you, Pat, appreciate it.
And then, Pat, don't feel like you have to stay. And then just, I guess, real quickly, things that weren't covered is right now, we have a five million dollar request for the realignment of the highway that's gonna be in front of the Senate. The U S Senate coming up. As Tony noted, we are one of many projects, but we are happy to have made the list. And so we'll know more if we made it through the final, final bill at the end of the year. But it's an eight point six million dollar, you know, request, so I think if we got this, we would be well on our way to getting the highway done. And I think that is a vote of confidence for us moving the athletic field and planning, even though we didn't have the money to say we're ready to go with our project. And then we finished a Wabashia Hella Trail feasibility report to connect the two communities. And we did a bridge inspection and found that the existing piers are usable. And now we're looking to create a joint powers agreement between us, the township of Greenfield and Hella. So that's been a good project with everyone kind of coming together and collaborating, which is exciting. And then we're gonna have an open police officer position and that's on the consent agenda. Ben, Ben Swanson is joining the county. And then she, Stark and I met with the League of Minnesota Cities to discuss policies and practices in the city of Wabashia that are keeping our workman's complaints low for our police department. And what we learned is we kind of stand out as a community in terms of having a low number of workman's complaints in our police department. And so that speaks to Joel's leadership, your leadership. We talked a lot about our police department feels supported, there's not a lot of drama, they enjoy working there and that all keeps people happy at work and not wanting to sue the city on their way out the door. So we're hoping to keep that going and we learned some interesting strategies from the city of Plainview as well that was in the meeting. That's it.
Cool. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The items on this agenda are the athletic field complex A application, the seven twelve point three council minutes, August warrants, approval to hire our list assignments of a part-time casual EMT, except Tony Petro's resignation as a full-time EMT. I believe he's going on to be correct, so I'll leave. Public Works employee higher approval, Eagle Basin subdivision, payment repair, the towing back cost, and then also the Minnesota Internet Crimes Against Children task force, joint power agreement.
Well, I'll just quickly explain that one. That is so that we have a partnership where Dan Metcalf can pursue internet crimes against children. So that's a new initiative and we're excited about that. I don't know, Joe, do you have any more comments on that?
Yeah, it's essentially, it's kind of a no-brainer. It's just a partnership where they realize they have to deal with a lot of that stuff in different small towns, but since we have Metcalf and the ability to handle our own investigations like that, that that's something that they appreciate to take off their load and they are then willing to assist us in anything that might be needed with surveillance and different things. Like a lot of times if we're dealing with someone with a computer, they can come in with their equipment and get that information right now rather than waiting year, you know, for it to go through up in the city, so. And then by us committing to that too, we kind of, they prioritize us when we have anything down here and then he's got free trainings through them for anything related, so. It's a pretty good deal. Good, good.
And I will just add on the resignation. We're also requesting a refill position with two part-time EMTs and part-time paramedics.
I would guarantee a motion to approve. All right, all right. Jean is second, Jeff is first. All those in favor say aye. All those both same time? All right, that passed. The next agenda item is a public hearing. There's two of them. Let's take one at a time here. The first one is a cannabis moratorium and this is really a public hearing to really establish a moratorium until, I believe, January first, twenty twenty-five. Basically prohibiting establishment of new uses, expansion, sales, testing, manufacturing, or distribution of THC products throughout the city. And I would just want to say anything. Wendy, you have anything else to add? Okay, since the public hearing for the resolution, I will open the public hearing at six nineteen P M. And I would guarantee anybody in the audience that wants to speak on behalf of this to come to the podium. Yeah, okay, I'll just ask it again since there's a lot of activity out there. Anybody that wants to speak on behalf of the interim ordinance? Come to the podium. I'll just ask one more time. Anybody wants to speak on behalf of the interim ordinance? All right, it doesn't look like, is there any comments? I will close the public hearing at six twenty. Any comments from staff?
Section one, it said the case back in July, that should be August first.
Okay.
So this is the first reading.
This will be, yeah, we just move on to this only. Any other comments? Otherwise I would entertain a motion to approve the interim order. All right, next, next one is a public hearing on the twenty twenty-three street improvement project assessment hearing. Caroline or Katie, do you want to give a little update on this, please?
We'll give you a briefing on that, so the closest I've ever prepared for the street project is on the asset costs that we had in June and we were, the improvement policy is also called the assessment policy. I think we've been through the calculation before, I can go again more into where. The terms of the assessment are defined in the resume as the patch to your package. So after the hearing, we'll ask you to go over that, that resolution, which they asked with assessments. Something I want to point out, this is a little bit different from past projects. This is a different project, it's only because that's adding the acceptance due on January or twenty twenty-five as opposed to maybe later this year. We also just have a weekly rate of this five point one seven, start accruing after the project is substantial. So again, January first, twenty twenty-five, so those terms are incorporated in the year resolution. Once you relax for that solution, the property owners will have two main methods of payment. They can either pay part of them or fully before November first of next year, because that's when the city has to report the certification to the county. The property owners have, have the right to allow to roll to the natural, to certify to the county that had with their own product tax statement. The taxes or the assessments will be paid over ten years with the interest that we define. So that'll need to stand. Any questions?
Also, any questions at all? Okay, thanks, we appreciate it. With that, I will open the public hearing at six twenty-three P M. And again, anybody in the audience that would like to speak on behalf of the twenty twenty-three street improvement product settlement, please come forward.
I would just like you or somebody to sort of explain the your discretion, deferment payment of sixty-five or whatever, bring your own business. You live there too. So the statute allows for a government and your policy defines kind of the kinds of wish to building can happen, so that's someone sixty-five, there's their owner retired, part of the work, full disability, or if they need certain income requirements that are defined in the policy. If a property owner is interested in deferment, they will come to the city and jump, they will be the person to talk to, she unperform, they will apply within ninety days after the doctor's resolution tonight. The boarding documentation has to be provided with an application and then the new process and stuff. Now, what deferment means is that they would not have to pay the assessment today. It still would be certified to the property when the, their situation changes, so a lot of times when retirees of the home sells that the settlement and the approved videos that have to be paid off at that time. So you have to go to the city to apply for after approval, after approval to that.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Yeah, come on to the podium, please. You can sign in.
I guess my colleagues, hi, my name is Jess. I live on Pembroke. I don't know, I'm assuming this is to approve it tonight if we're gonna do it. Where are we supposed to park then when this starts? I know the building that was the old Ben Franklin is no longer there or is not being used right now. My mom can't walk very far. She has MS. I can't have my mom walk six blocks for her to get in the house and you're gonna rip up all Pembroke. Where are we supposed to park in this meantime, especially in the wintertime when my mom can barely walk? She's a part-time worker right now and she walks with a cane. And this nine thousand dollars that we're supposed to be paying, I understand that it could be over ten years. I don't have a money tree in my bag. I understand five point one three percent is not gonna be five point one three percent for ten years. Over ten years, it could end up being ten percent. I work at Valley. I'm not a million dollar owner or anything. This is hard for me. I've already had water with my plumbing or issues with my plumbing already. How much more am I gonna have? I'm thirty-nine years old. I don't know much about this. I've owned my house for six years. Please maybe dumb this down for me so I can understand what's gonna happen and what's gonna happen over ten years for nine thousand dollars with this and where my mom is going to walk and not fall and break anything. Unless we're gonna pay for her when she falls and breaks her ankle, because she already did on the sidewalk because it was frozen. I'm sorry, I'm very emotional about this. I don't mean to be abrupt. I worry about my mom. My mom is my lifeline. If I lose my mom or any of this because she can't walk eight blocks to get to the house, I'm not okay with that. You want me to, do you want me to put my address on?
Anthony, what is your address? You said Pembroke.
Two twenty-eight Pembroke, yeah, I live right next to the old Ben Franklin.
Katie, can you address a little less question?
Yeah, thanks.
I think it's good to check. That you're about this now. Pembroke is gonna be constructed and connected here and we know that your mom has limited movement and she goes to her house, but I'm gonna connect you with Russ Washington, is there any old representative there? And he will work with you and your mom to make sure you have adequate access. The street is not gonna be closed down all the time, so you'll have driveway access through much of the project. But we'll make, make sure we make that convention that we're, you know, once we're aware of those.
And then I would just comment that, you know, we just occasionally just explained the deferment process. So if you do have a financial hardship, there were three criteria. One was a disability, one was under certain income restrictions and one was over six, tired or retired. So you have to come to city hall and fill out an application for that. And I feel like, so what that means, I guess, for everyone here is then that debt is recorded against the property and is paid. But if it's, if you're the owner and don't meet that criteria, I don't know if that would count.
We both are, so.
Okay, so we would have to look at the household and figure if he would qualify, but you could certainly fill out an application, but.
The deferment is only good for five years.
Yeah.
Unless you sell your home or someone passes away in that, but otherwise it's good for five years.
And then after the five years, then you can start the payment process, right? You don't have to, yeah, right.
Yeah, to make it simple, I would just tell the city, I'll talk to this.
Why, I need to. The, then it's a great, that won't change your experience.
That's the same, yeah.
The five point one seven.
Yeah, and then also if you had mentioned winter, the road will be on the drain.
Uh, anybody else, to be honest? Uh anybody else in the audience that would like to speak?
No one on mine.
Okay. I'll just ask one more time. Anybody else that wants to speak on the? Twenty twenty three street improvement project assessment. Come up to the podium. All right, not seen anybody will close the public hearing at six thirty. Any other comments, question from staff or council?
I have, I have comments on uh the problem approached me after we. People need them and they're concerned about. The signage for business downtown. They brought that up. They're concerned. And uh. Like filter hardware and restoring stuff is not included. Um somebody says it's fine. They do not. Um that was brought to my attention. I don't know what the answer to that is. But now's the time to talk about it.
Sure. I'm just uh.
Yeah.
Or later.
One second, instead of taking the left for slippery stick or right for. Hills and other main street. Something like that.
Well, we should be able to, yeah, changing, if you want to speak out, I had a little anxiety during construction then, but they've been put on. Like dying in the same order.
So we did add some signage this weekend. Um so there's a liberty sign in each park that that goes left. There there's supposed to be, and it's known today that there's a main street business that's parking. That points you to down Second Street and to where the public parking lots are. There's another one that's supposed to be at Pedro and Second that basically it's the same main street businesses parking and points you down Second Street towards public parking lots. Those need to be put back in the correct locations. I'm very connected to Russ, but that that is what's out there today.
Okay.
And then I'll just add to that, we thought Main Street businesses that way would be effective. More effective than listing every single. Main Street that cluttered the sign and then no one's actually reading it versus Main Street businesses that way. So that was staff level decision. And the signs have been ordered and that seemed fair to me. Um and then slippery is literally the only one in the other direction and the staff provided input that it is kind of tricky to get there, so.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Otherwise, I think we'll move on to general business and one.
Yeah, both of you.
Again.
Oh, did you say?
Uh ten one, which is the revolution twenty nine, twenty twenty three, adopting the twenty three street and improvement assessments. Any other? Comments on this, otherwise I would entertain a motion.
Boom.
So. Uh Dean first, Jeff the second. Uh any other comments? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those both same time. Guys, this. Uh ten two, general business, the stigma edition plot approval. This is, I think, just to kind of consolidate all this law from the law, if I remember.
Yeah, it looks like just housekeeping, so.
Uh any comments, questions from staff? Any questions you think we can talk more about?
We'll move.
All right.
Sorry.
Uh Dean the first, Jeff the second. Um all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. All right, that is approved. Uh eleven one, which is the donation, the August donation. Uh Brian, you go.
Yeah, and read your law, please.
Okay, uh we have a slew of donations for the library. Um the first four, remember your fault, please. Fifty dollars from Dave and Nancy Elkerberg. Twenty five dollars uh by John Johnson Monday, twenty five dollars David and Marion Heller. Twenty five dollar Liam and Joan Whitaker. Um the next one is for Large Western Prince. Not sure where those are for. Oh, that's for the library. Uh two hundred dollars from anonymous donation. Uh fifty dollars in memory of Eunice Skulentich. Uh by. Gary and Ball. Uh I don't see a last name. Um the next one is also for Eunice, fifty dollar by Kathleen Swirtich. M V. Uh twenty five dollars for Eunice, a John Sukampi, and another twenty dollars for Eunice by Kathy Edwards. And then the last library donations for the summer reading program for a thousand dollars by. The Wabashaw Rotary Club. And then we have two donations to the athletic field complex. Uh one thousand dollar anonymous donation. And a two hundred and fifty dollar donation by Peter Sharon. And that's it. I'll move to approve. Second. All right, we got a first, Ryan, a second from Dean. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both at a time. Perfect. And I think the only one here announcement is our twenty twenty four budget workshop Tuesday, August twenty second, at three P M at the Public Library. Any other announcements? Then. All right, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve or to adjourn.
Boom.
Okay. Um Dean and John.